All right, I'm gonna call the City Council Work Session for Springfield to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pisionary.
And Councillor Pisionary is excused for the evening and then I'll turn it over to to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Van Gordon. I'll call the Springfield Planning Commission Work Session to order. Could I have a roll call, please, Brenda?
Commissioner McGinley.
Present.
Commissioner Landon. Commissioner Coivilla.
Here.
Commissioner Gill is absent. Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
And Commissioner Salazar. Okay.
I will note, I see Commissioner Salazar in the attendees.
He should become momentarily, he has been given permission to promote.
Thank you. Okay, great. Welcome, Commissioner Salazar. We just did roll call.
Thank you, present. It's all about the timing when you get here. All right, well, welcome, everybody. This is our annual City Council and Planning Commission Joint Hearing, Joint Meeting, and this is really an opportunity for us to kind of get connected and and just sort of discuss things that were that both the City Council and the Planning Commission are working together. And, you know, more importantly, especially as we've been working more remotely, sometimes we all feel a little bit more disconnected in having a chance to talk about like what's coming up in the city, what's on our minds, and how do we all work collectively better together is is critical. The last point I would make, and then I'll offer it to Sophie to see if she's got any opening remarks before we get started. I want the Planning Commission to know that, like, how much we on that, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and the City Council appreciates what you guys are doing. You guys probably worked the hardest of any of our citizen committees, and I know we ask a lot of you guys weekend and week out, and it's noticed and appreciated. Sophie, did you have any comments you wanted to make before we got started?
Just say, welcome, everyone. It's nice to finally have a joint work session again. It's been a couple years since we last met, and there's some new faces on both the Council and the Commission, so just excited for us to see each other tonight and connect and grateful to Mayor Van Gordon for suggesting that we come together again. Looking forward to our discussion.
All right, before we turn it over to the staff, we're gonna do a quick round of introductions, since I don't think everybody knows each other, so we'll go through the City Council first and we'll go by Ward. So Sean Van Gordon, Mayor.
Damian Pitts, Ward one.
Steve Mo, Ward two.
Mary Rodley, my pronouns are she, her, and hers, Ward three.
Leonard Stare, Ward four.
Mary Lee Woodrow, Ward five.
And Councillor Pisionary is the one that's missing. So then I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission, and if you guys can do a quick round of introductions, and then we'll get started.
Thank you. We don't have Ward Order, so I'll just call on everyone and maybe just say what which ward you live in. So I'm Sophie McGinley. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I live in Ward two, and my pronouns are she, hers. Commissioner Bergen.
Um, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bergen, Grace Bergen here, and I live in Ward one. I've been on the Planning Commission for a handful of years.
And Commissioner Buck.
Andrew Buck, I'm in Ward six. Yeah, pretty sure it's six. And I'm brand new to the Planning Commission for a few months ago.
Thank you. And Commissioner Coivilla.
Mike Coivilla. In my second term, I'll be off the Commission in 2023, and I did want to say that I believe that the recent appointments to the Planning Commission have just been excellent. High commendations to the City Council for your picks.
Commissioner Salazar.
Hello, everyone. Matt Salazar. I am resident of Ward two. I use he/him pronouns and have been on the Planning Commission for 11 months now.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
It looks like the, thank you very much. The first item looks like a set of discussion questions that Sandy's prepared for us, so I'm going to turn it over to Sandy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Planning Commissioners. I actually took these questions from the Chair of the Planning Commission in terms of what they thought would be helpful to talk about with you. In preparing for this meeting with the Mayor and Chair McGinley, we had identified two main topics for discussion for this joint meeting, one being public outreach and public meetings, particularly in the pandemic environment, and how that has gone. And then the second one is the big project for the Planning Commission and the city is the Development Code Update. So these questions really are best answered sort of interspersed throughout your meeting tonight because they do touch on both the introductions as well as the public outreach and Development Code Update. And so I'll just say that if you wanted to take the cue from the first question here, if you wanted to continue talking in terms of an introductory mode to mention something you're proud of from the past year in your service to the city. And if you want to skip that and just go on to public outreach, I can launch into that, but as you wish.
I think we're ready to keep going on to public outreach.
Alrighty, so the overview of citizen involvement that I provided touches on the meetings themselves in terms of the Planning Commission. We tried out a virtual assist in terms of Springfield, Oregon speaks, which allows for asynchronous meetings. And then I also provided an overview of the three big projects. We've done more than those, but three of the comprehensive planning projects with a table of the outreach efforts that have happened over this past year. And then working with the planners who had managed those projects identified a number of lessons learned that we can take forward as we look into doing public outreach, both next year, but also, you know, potentially switching over to the hybrid environment. So with that, I'm gonna just stop and then refer to, you know, questions could be about, excuse me, you know, how did the outreach seem from both the Planning Commission and Council perspective in terms of functioning in this virtual environment? Did we, were we successful in doing the outreach necessary? And what improvements could we make going forward? And then Commissioners could speak to your experience with Springfield, Oregon speaks, if you wanted to talk about that at all. So turn it back over to you.
All right. So who wants to get us kicked off with a conversation sort of about public outreach? Mary Lee?
Yeah. Um, I was aware of Springfield Speaks several months ago when it went online, and I went back into it today as if I were a community member to figure out how to work it and what to do or how to how to make comments. And and I I don't want to make people feel bad, but it was very confusing. I went on the website, the homepage for the city, and unless I went to the Planning Commission and and worked my way through to all the way up to a contact, there was just so many steps. It wasn't easy. If if we want to, I think it's a great idea. I like the idea of Springfield Speaks. I like the, I like the the reaching out to gain the participation. I think we have an evolving community. We still have a certain percentage of people who are not in with the technology. But as we grow as a community and and as we age, we're gonna have the majority of the community who is technologically connected. So this is a good beginning. This is a good start to get people used to being able to connect with the the city in whatever way they want to. And I think Springfield Speaks is a good way to do it. But the problems that I had, I had just a few things, and I'll throw them out for whatever discussion or response people might have, and I could have missed something, so I'm not, you know, gonna be, I'm not talking as an authority. I, like I said, it was difficult. It wasn't, to me, it wasn't user-friendly to be able to get to a point or a place where I could make a comment. Unless I knew ahead of time a certain project or something that I wanted to make a comment on. If I just wanted to make a comment from my part of the community, it was it was very hard to figure out if it wasn't attached to a certain project. And like I said, maybe I missed something, but I couldn't find it. Let's see. What I was, one of the things I was interested in is one of the comments that was made was I having connections. Having having a relationship, establishing a relationship and then knowing, having connected with a project and that. I saw the the charts of participation, and I've been involved with this Main Street project, so I knew what that one looked like. And participation-wise, that one looks awesome. But I also know that their outreach was tremendous. I mean, it went out very far in lots of different ways because they needed to have that in order to proceed and make decisions. And so I expected the participation to be high in higher in that because of the different things that they use, but it wasn't all Springfield Speaks that was related to that chart. I feel like I'm talking in circles, but how would we know to direct someone to a project or to outreach? How do we know to do that? How does someone get noticed that that's that that is an option to use? Like I said, to me, it was very user-unfriendly momentarily. And it seems like we've got, we've, Council has talked about different ways of, Nancy has mentioned having agenda software, which is gonna pull topics and projects and and things together in a in a more linear way. And is there a way to incorporate Springfield Speaks into that so that we can get, so that we can connect people and comments with certain topics? I was, I was, that's one of the things that came up in my mind as I was, as I was reading through this, that for this to be successful and really garner participation interconnectivity is really key. And so that we connect the people that speak, the people that make comments, the people who have been tagged by outreach, but it needs to be, it needs to be available, and I know we're just in the beginning stages of it, and that's part of where my comments are coming from. I would like to see it be successful. I would like to see it be be used and used well, but I'd like the community to know that it's there and that it's user-friendly, that they can end, and that it connects with whatever part of the city or whatever project it needs to connect to, or if it's isolated, it needs to connect somehow or other in data assembly. So that so that we know it's there and we know it knows to be addressed. So those are my comments right now. And like I said, I'm tossing, I'm just tossing them out because of what I did today to go through the experience of using it. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Cory?
Thank you. And I appreciate Councillor Woodrow sharing that perspective because mine was different. I I didn't have the same sort of experience on the website. I just went and kind of checked it out, and granted, I didn't spend a lot of time, but I appreciate, I actually I actually thought it was pretty easy to kind of navigate through and to see what was happening. So there's just probably something there in just sort of different experiences of it and wondering, you know, how do we get to something that is gonna be useful for everyone? And I think also I was just thinking of it as one tool in terms of public outreach. It definitely is sharing information, and it's, it was, it's more accessible to me than how I used to find just trying to figure out what was going on at like a council meeting. I mean, that's why you could kind of look down and see what it is that you're interested in, look at that. So that's just my sort of alternative perspective in that I did not find it a challenge to navigate through and actually, you know, found it to be sort of fine and interesting, and also didn't spend a ton of time on there, but just was like, oh, what if I wanted to ask myself a couple of questions? What if I wanted to blah, blah, blah? And I was able to see it, and I appreciated also having the sort of resource materials along with it. So there's information there about like, what is a quasi judicial meeting? And and here is our land acknowledgement. And so I kind of, I appreciated that that stuff was in a place that was very public.
All right, anybody else want to jump in here? Steve?
I'm talking about City's webpage. That's our image to anybody that looks at City of Springfield. They go to that webpage, whether it's hopefully easy and informative to them. And I've heard a lot of people having problems with it, and I'm okay with it now, but I did it at the beginning too. And I think I've heard acknowledged somewhere else that we need to look into that. So I want to stress that right now. I like to make that more user-friendly for the public out there because that's how they view Springfield the first time.
Damian?
Hi. So personally, I mean, I think the page is fairly accessible. When I think about, you know, the larger picture, how do we as citizens of Springfield, make people want to actually engage on that page and want to, you know, give comment to actually read the stuff? Because I mean, I think there are a lot of people who just, I'm not gonna say they don't care, but they're busy dealing with their other things, and and they also feel that government isn't necessarily accessible for them. I mean, when you look across all boards and commissions, I mean, it's fairly homogeneous. And so how do you get people who would not normally contribute to contribute? And to me, I think that's one of the hardest things to do. I mean, we can provide resources and make it accessible, but just because it's accessible doesn't mean people want to access it. And so how do we fix that? And to me, I think that's one of the biggest things that we need to do.
Mary Lee?
Yes, I I have a vision, a vision in my mind of a funnel. There's, there's all different ways to be in in touch with the city. Springfield Speaks, testifying at council, sending an email, all those different ways. If you're a member of the community, you're not involved, you look at all the different ways, and you just go, ah! You don't know how valuable a comment is gonna be in whatever source you might choose to to proceed with your, with what you want to say or who you want to get connected with. What I'd like to see, and I agree with Cory, that it is, Springfield Speaks is a tool. We need to take our toolbox, and we need to create like a funnel so that we create a data collection or data, whatever you would call it, putting it all together. So it interconnects, it connects, because having isolated tools is not going to create the resource that we want for the community to be able to feel comfortable, that when they do connect on the, on with the way that they're comfortable with, they can connect if they're comfortable with email, with a phone call, with Springfield Speaks, whatever way they're comfortable in reaching out, they need to feel that that's gonna get somewhere. And so we need to have some way of putting that all together from the different resources down to it in a funnel way, so that it gets to a point of where it reaches sort of being sorted out and being in context so that it's valuable and and makes a makes an impact.
Leonard?
Thanks, Mayor. I was just looking at the City Council web or the city website myself, and it looks as though there are links for the agendas and the minutes and for public documents relevant to the Planning Commission and the City Council. And I was wondering if it would be feasible to have a search function by keyword. Like, for instance, if you wanted to find out what had been going on in Glenwood for the last few years, you could just type in Glenwood and look at the documents that were relevant within the recent future anyway. I mean, recent past, sorry. Recent future would be more difficult.
I think they've got that down as maybe an idea. Grace?
Thank you. It's very valuable to hear the City Council's view on this because you haven't been in it like we have. So in utilizing it, there's a couple of things that I have found really beneficial. First of all, any suggestions that we've had for Sandy, she's been able to take back to the company and work through and find solutions, which I applaud them for. One of the things that I really like is I don't always have my iPad with me, therefore I don't always have my email with me. So I am able to log in from any device to Springfield Oregon Speaks and find if I have down a down moment, say I'm waiting for an appointment or something. I have a down moment to where I can go in and review documents. I had, the accessibility is a lot greater. I think with anything that's new, there's going to be a learning curve. So teaching, if you will, the our community, that that's an opportunity for them to go in and have everything more together. So then they have that opportunity to do their research before they submit their testimony, I think is helpful. For me, it's helpful having all of the testimony categorized based upon each specific topic that we're talking about. So if I wanted to look at a specific topic, I'm not having to file through or scroll through, excuse me, an entire packet. It's really helpful to be able to go clicking and finding things. I don't always log in to, actually, most of the time I don't log into Springfield Oregon Speaks. And so the way that I'm looking at everything is almost as if I am looking at it like a community member that's not coming to the meetings. So I'm able to see what a lot of them are seeing. However, I've been so one-track focused to where I'm not going out and exploring like it sounds like Councillor Woodrow has. And so that's really good to hear, but when I'm using it on the backend, it has been helpful. One of the things that we shared with Sandy that we wanted to see is, as you know, we have a rotating schedule for the Planning Commissioners to visit in on the council meetings. And Sandy was able to work with the organization or the company to where we can have a tab at the bottom to have our schedule, which has been really helpful because, again, we're not always next to that email that's on the iPad. So I've had some overall pretty good experience with it, and and I'm excited to see what other things they could offer for us and what other things they can do for us to be.
Right. Thank you. And I would be interested, as we kind of get into the Planning Commissioners, to hear if if the public comment that you have comes to, you feel like it's sort of an actionable form to sort of successfully consider for any any land use hearings that you have. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so I'm fairly new to this, and one of the things that stands out to me is that when I, when I'm reading through the public comments, I'm noticing definite, definitely clear positions and definitely people have some strong opinions. I don't know that they're always actionable, per se, but I I think it's clear where people stand and what their issues are. One of the things that I wonder and I don't know about is when people do make comments in in other venues, when I've made comments on something, knowing that that got read, knowing that it got seen by somebody is is always a really nice validation, kind of matters. I don't know if Springfield Oregon Speaks has a feature attached to it like that where when Commissioners or other maybe council members would look at that, if it, if it gives that feedback, like, hey, this, this is, your comment has been read, it's been received. And I think that having something like that is gonna help with what Councillor Pitts was talking about. How do we, how do we get people to want to spend some time engaging? And I think that one of the one of the answers to that is people need to feel like it matters. People need to feel like there was a point to spending, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, an hour even, looking through the issues, looking through the resources, and then giving their opinion. Because if they don't have that validation, if that just feels like it goes into nowhere, then I think I think it's gonna be hard to feel like it matters. It's, it's like growing up, people talked about your vote matters. Well, this is, this is our version of that here is your opinion matters. So I just think that being able to create that so people got that response and feedback, I think, is important.
Thanks, Andrew. I would just offer the suggestion for us all that it, sometimes it won't be a checkoff list that gets people to understand that we're listening and hearing it. It's, it's comments that we make, right? It's relationships that we build, and being able to really explain how you're considering and diving into public input really helps solidify that. That doesn't mean tools like that don't help, but we really need to kind of have this to describe our values as a public entity, which is, hey, we're weighing your input, we're applying it no matter what. Sophie?
Thank you, Mayor. And for the record, I'll note that Vice Chair Landon is here now. Let me look down at my notes. I've really enjoyed having Springfield Oregon Speaks, and I commend staff for launching it during the pandemic. I think that was an apt time to try something new virtually. I have felt that it's intuitive, and I think some of that comes from my generation. So grew up with the internet in my hand, basically, and so I recognize that we are, we, there is this element of, you know, helping, helping it become more intuitive for people. So one of my suggestions is perhaps having a YouTube video for how to navigate the site at the, you know, very front page, the landing page. And then, as always, making materials accessible by mail or for folks going into Springfield City Hall. So I think it's great that City Hall is open now. I also wish that the meetings were livestreamed. I think it's great to have them on Zoom. And if they automatically went to YouTube and people could watch them on YouTube, that would also reduce the administrative burden on the staff for having to upload them later. And that can all be set up with a few clicks, which is nice. I do wish that there was a button you could click to activate Google Translate. So if we had that just integrated into the platform, it's not perfect, and it's a start. You know, actual comprehensive translation takes a lot of time and sometimes money. So if we had a quick fix in the interim while we're having a budget crisis, I think it would be helpful to have that option if available. As far as usability as a Commissioner, we used to get emailed a whole PDF of our packet, and as you all know, sometimes land use packets can be 700 pages long, and how do you, how do you approach that? So as Commissioner Bergen said, it's been really helpful to have each topic have its own spot, and then it makes it easier for me as a Commissioner to read the book by the chapter instead of just the whole thing. So being able to digest the content that way and navigate during a meeting to specific things instead of aimlessly scrolling through my PDF. And then my last comment that I'll make is that I think once all of the city boards and commissions and the council are using Springfield Oregon Speaks, then it will make a little bit more sense because right now, even when I go to find council materials, I start on Springfield Oregon Speaks, so used to it. And then it's like, oh, wait, no, I have to go back to the webpage, and then I get that whole PDF that's 800 pages long. And so I think once we all make the jump together, it'll get a little bit easier, but I've really enjoyed it. And just echoing another one of Commissioner Bergen's sentiments, that staff has been so responsive and asked us how it works for us and how it can be improved, and really appreciate that.
Um, thank you, and I excuse me. Um, yeah, I, and I, and I think, I hope we get to the live streaming of meetings as well, right? It's gonna help a ton. And I would, I don't know that Springfield Oregon Speaks is gonna be the place where the council ends up, but I want to acknowledge that it's probably in the conversation about, you know, well, how do we manage sort of the workflow and the contents that as we see, see, see the council. So even though you guys are huge fans. So even though you guys are huge fans, I like, it just need, there needs to be space to have that conversation for the, for the council. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'm speaking as a, I guess, quote unquote, native to Springfield Oregon speaks. And as a planning commissioner, my first meeting was on Springfield Oregon speak. So I don't know a time before using this platform, but I do know that. I have enjoyed what Commissioner McGinley was mentioning about, and Commissioner Bergen mentioning about the. How the packets are broken up and you can click on a certain item and see all of the attachments related to that, that topic. I have, I have found that the ability to log in as a commissioner to Springfield Oregon speaks. And see a public comment and mark it as read has been a very helpful tool. And then to see not only how many of my fellow commissioners have read that, that comment, but also for that person, the author of that comment to see. If how many, how many members of the, of the commission have read that comment is really helpful. In terms of actionableness of comments, I have found it helpful. I, I've noticed a few times when we've gotten pointed comment about a particular item before the meeting. And then we bring it up in our questions with staff, the, the items that are being raised in those comments. And I've noticed a few times where someone who's law, who's logged into the meeting with the same name as the person who gave the comment. Is presumably there to share the same concern in public testimony. We rose, raise those questions that have come up in their comments. And then they don't give public testimony seemingly, I would guess, because they feel that their, their concerns have been. Heard by the council. So I noticed that a couple of times, I would say in terms of. I've noticed a few times where staff has received comment by email or some other means and put it in Springfield Oregon speaks. So I think in, in that terms, I think Springfield Oregon speaks could be a helpful tool in that. Kind of funnel that you're talking about councillor Woodrow, the, the tool to bring. Items together from disparate, whether it's coming in by email or by phone call or by a letter into the city council or in Springfield Oregon speaks itself. I think that could act as that funnel potentially. And I think just to use a, I think there is a learning curve. I would never recommend using one single tool. And only going digital in terms of collecting public comment or. Because you want to have a multiple seat of ways for people to engage. But yeah, to use a planning metaphor, I think. Learning Springfield Oregon speaks is not dissimilar from learning how a roundabout works, like a traffic circle. Using a, using a roundabout as a driver the first few times, it's kind of tricky. You're learning the ropes, but after a few times using that roundabout, you know which exit to take, you know, kind of the rules of the road per se. So I think with some training, the public could get used to, to this tool. And I found it helpful as a pressure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lee?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that, I like your metaphor, your comparison with the roundabout, that's true. And I think that the, the thing is getting people out there wanting to, wanting to learn, wanting to know. And like I said, that the further along the community grows, the more people are going to be like Sophie. Who just automatically are, you know, oriented technologically, you know, we don't, we're going to have fewer and fewer that aren't oriented that way as, as we go along. It's just going to evolve. The only other comment I had was when, when the information comes in. To anything that you're discussing project or otherwise, and you find that comments or information that has been presented. Is has weight, has value in your decision process or your recommendation process. Is there a way to flag it to have that be part of your recommendation? We received this testimony from this person through Springfield speaks and it had value in our discussion and in our recommendation. And so here is, here is what we, you know, what we found value, you know, of value. I think that might help when it comes to making recommendations to, well, I'm thinking council, but even staff. In order to be utilized, what comes in, because I, I think. And that's another way to have people realize that what they're doing is valuable for the community.
All right, great. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm hearing some great suggestions here. And I know Sandy has been very good at incorporating our suggestions into Springfield Oregon speaks. I myself did have a little bit of problems with it initially. And now that I've gotten used to it after a few months, it's pretty intuitive to me. I'm a big fan of those 900 page PDFs. I use Adobe Acrobat and they've also provided us an excellent. Review program called, let's see, what is that called? It's, it's usable on the Mac only and on the iPad only. And both of those things are very useful in dealing with the larger files, bookmarks, et cetera. So, thank you.
All right. So in regards to Springfield Oregon speaks, I'm hearing that we want to kind of keep using it from the planning commission. Like there's a couple of suggestions sort of floating around and sort of a lot of acknowledgement that. You know, going into some sort of hybrid meeting in the, in the future, we still need a lot of places to engage the public. And take, you know, online content, you know, for sometimes hard and complex, complex things. Now, does, when I look down this list, does, did anybody have other comments that's specific to some of the other forms of public engagement and outreach that are in the packet? The one that I really, that jumped out to me was really the virtual town halls. And, you know, reading the comments from the virtual town halls, a few that we've seen the last two years, they've been helpful. I think from a usability perspective, they've been good. Like I, I'm still waiting for the, I'm not sure I have it all the way. Meaning that, you know, when you think about how you gather information and, and then you turn that into policy. Sometimes I feel like the comments coming back, it takes me a little bit more time thinking about where that person's coming from. To get to really be able to formulate policy based off of it. I don't know that that's a, that's an issue with the actual town hall mechanic. That may just be this is a new thing and we're all you, learning how to use it, including myself. But that's one of the, I guess, one of the reactions I had to it. Sophie?
Thank you. Some of the comments I had for things that went well is. I appreciated that there's not a one size fits all approach to planning projects. Each project that was featured had its own engagement approach and its own results. And I think, you know, was to also tailored to the, the skillset of the staff person who's the project manager. So really appreciated that. And I've just been so proud of what Springfield staff have been able to accomplish and have really felt as if. You know, our role as the CCI has been, you know, carried out for what we'd like to see happen. For things that I think could improve or I'd like to see improve in the coming year is. I think we had a little bit of a quiet year with virtual meetings. Planning commission is usually kind of a quieter space unless there's a super high profile project. But I would like to see more people at meetings or at least more people involved with public comments. And another comment that I have is that planning commission sometimes sounds like someone is on trial. And sometimes it is very serious and uncomfortable, the things that we're talking about in local government. But I think especially with land use, going to planning commission because your neighbor's building a fence could often be your first time interacting with your local government. And it can be really daunting coming into these meetings. So I've been asking myself, you know, how do we meet these legal requirements? While making meetings more accessible and welcoming? So do we, do we continue to hold our public hearings the way that we always have, just because that's the way we always have? Or is there a way to do things in the order that we're supposed to do while kind of modernizing and making local government more accessible? And I'll just say again, big, big kudos to staff. I have no idea how Springfield gets everything done with the staff that they have. I hope one day that more staff is added. You can only do more with more staff. And I do fear burnout sometimes for them. Back when I was an intern, I was just amazed by how much stuff got done. And I've stayed on, I, you know, moved to Springfield and applied to the planning commission because I was so impressed with all of the work that staff does and continues to do. So just really want to take this opportunity. You have a very special staff. And you have a planning commission that I think has established a great relationship with staff and has built that trust and confidence with them. And hope that we're making you proud. I think we're pretty proud of the work that's happening as far as engagement goes.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to just once again commend staff, I think in terms of outreach that was really particularly. Great that I noticed was with the Main Street Safety Project, staff put together a fact sheet. That was particular to dispelling myths and rumors and misconceptions and addressing those. And I just really would love to see something like that for any project that the city does. I think for any private public project, there's bound to be a rumor mill that, that comes up. And some of those rumors come seemingly out of nowhere. And I just think that that particular fact sheet was a really great way to say, this is what we've heard in the community. We're hearing what's coming up in the community that, and this is our attempt to address and be transparent around. Maybe some, some things that are being misunderstood for whatever reason.
All right, perfect. All right. Does anybody else have other comments or issues that they want to bring up? All right, I'm going to check the questions that, that Sandy wrote down for us and see if we've covered, if we've covered everything. Um, I think Sandy, we are, we may be ready for, we may be ready for the development code update.
Sure. So Mark Rust should be joining us here shortly to be able to present on that item.
All right, we'll see if we've got him yet. Running just a little bit ahead of schedule, it looks like.
I know he was in the meeting, but needs to be made.
He is in the meeting and I have already tried to promote him. I'm just waiting for it to pull him. Thank you. This is my first experience with Zoom where I have just been thrown an error code. So please hold. We will be with you momentarily.
All right. Good evening. I am here just clicking buttons feverishly to get access. So thanks for all the talk about public outreach and citizen involvement tonight. The framing on the development code update project tonight is a little bit twofold. In the discussion questions part, there, there's already been some discussion about the development code. In terms of implementing and overhaul and takeaways and that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm not going to really touch on that necessarily more unless there's questions specific to it. But in the third agenda item packet tonight, the packet includes a list of new legislative items. That have been adopted by the state that we're working to incorporate into the development code update project. You've, between the two bodies, Planning Commission and City Council, you've both heard a fair amount about some of these. And the, the natural one that rises at the top of the list is House Bill 2001. But there's a couple of others and many others that are also being dealt with in the background that I wanted to just touch on. I don't intend to necessarily go down the list in entirety. So I just want to touch on a couple. And then if there's specific questions, I'm happy to go into more detail. The other one I've probably talked mostly about other than House Bill 2001 and its companion legislation, House Bill 2003. That is going to provide some more work for us to do in the near future. But Senate Bill 458, you've heard some about, it was just adopted. I think of this list, all of these are from the most recent legislative session. So just the legislation, late of session from 2021 that just concluded earlier this year. House bills 2001 and 2003 are from the 2019 legislative session. However, the timelines for implementation of many of these new pieces of legislation, just from a handful of months ago. Are just as quick as the implementation deadlines for the two-year-old legislative work that we're, we've been working on. So it's been a little bit of a scramble to try and get up to speed and figure out how to do implementation, all this stuff. But again, Senate Bill 458 is the middle housing land division legislation. It's directly related to House Bill 2001. And in addition to requiring new middle housing, this new legislation requires us to allow division of that new middle housing. And so it, it actually supersedes some of the provisions of the administrative rules that were adopted by the state for implementing House Bill 2001. In regard to middle housing. So it's, it's kind of been a moving target, I guess, is a short way of saying that. Some more recent legislation, I'm, I'm going to just go to the second one on the list. House Bill 2583 deals with not being able to regulate by and for housing. Not regulate occupancy limits by, by family status. So, yeah.
How fat, like since House Bill 2001, right, like across Oregon, housing is a huge issue. How fast are these new requirements coming out of, out of the legislature? Can we even keep up?
And we, sorry, I missed the very last piece of that.
Can we even keep up? Like, they're flying. This list gets longer and longer.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think it's a valid question. And I would say. In terms of implementing it all into, so let me put it this way, if, if we weren't already updating our development code. If we weren't mid-process in the, in the project already, starting up a project from scratch to try and. Get a lot of this new legislative work implemented would be a stretch at best, I think. So in terms of keeping up, I think my wording for that would be is I think we're scrambling to keep up. Again, I think Commissioner McGinley rightly pointed out, the staff in Springfield, I, I refer to it as a lean and mean team. We, we tend to all work on a lot of different things all at the same time. And we're trying to get a lot of work done. I think Sandy can attest to that from the comprehensive planning side of things. Just planning, sometimes it feels like we're planning a day, day at a time kind of thing, or a week at a time and not really. You know, the council themselves, you have priorities that I'm sure you would love to be able to have worked on and get reports on the comprehensive or long range work program. And the capacity we have and some of that capacity is definitely being used up by these new legislative mandates, I would say.
Well, I, I think that may be a good takeaway for us all to remember as we interact, interface with, you know, legislators and, you know, colleagues in the policy world. Just to encourage, like, some of these are really good ideas, right? But just encourage them to be, the legislature to be a governor on the speed that they're flying at people to allow us to sort of keep up and integrate them in. In a, in a way that makes some sort of sense, right? Because we want them to generate new housing. I think that's ultimately where my question was, is like, okay, there's a lot flying down at us. How do we continue to say some of these are good ideas, but can we sort of space them out in a way that allows us to implement them and impact the housing in the city?
Yeah, I think it's a great comment. And I think how they interact together, I mean, a lot of these were thought of a little bit in isolation. But trying to understand how they work all together is a whole nother dynamic. There may be some unintended consequences that are as a result. The other piece is some of these legislative changes mandate or require administrative rule changes at the state level that haven't even taken place yet. We got into a little bit of that concern around trying to get ahead of House Bill 2001. We got into a little bit of that concern around trying to get ahead of House Bill 2001 originally with middle housing and trying to start to write some code that we thought would be consistent with the legislation. But then once the implementing rules were decided, quickly realized that, again, it felt a little bit like a moving target, that the rules implementing the legislation were slightly different than the legislation itself. I'm happy to listen to other comments or ask other questions. Again, you've all have the list of these legislative matters. I know the agenda item was scheduled to be pretty short. I will say it has been a lot to try and figure out how to incorporate a lot of this into the code. I feel the council's original direction for the development code update in the big picture was to try and really just update and modernize our code, but for the most part, stay policy neutral. And when I say that, I mean, consistent with our existing comprehensive plan. Some of these changes have, I think, required us to look at our comprehensive plan policies and how that may, some of that policy may need to change as well in order to implement some of the legislation.
Steve, did you have a comment?
I do. For some time, I've been saying the development code was outdated. Finally, we decided to make us a new one and we put Mark on that project and he's the best we've ever had. Luckily, he lays on in Salem, so he brings that stuff back. He knows it very well. But we're being, legislators are just giving us new stuff all the time. Trying to pull it into our development code really is make it complex. And coming down the road is this LCDC document I have talking about designation of climate-friendly areas and parking, all kinds of stuff. They hit on this stuff here, but I know it's going to end up being legislation eventually. This stuff is getting complicated, expensive, and very hard for people to follow. I don't have an answer, but it's pretty complex out there. And Mark's doing a good job. As soon as we get it in the books, then the staff has to interpret it. I tell you, it's going to get hard.
And I'll just comment quickly if I may, and that is one, it's not just me, there's a whole staff, people working on all this stuff. The City Attorney's Office is a huge help, other staff members. It does take a team of people, but Counselor Mo, you're right, the climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking process that's underway right now, it's not as a result of legislation. It's as a result of a governor's executive order. And it's being framed by some as likely to have a greater or as great of impact as the original creation of the land use program in the state. So in terms of the potential impacts from what that, how those rules will come out, it's likely to generate a great amount of work for us to try and implement or react to. Luckily, we have Emma Newman, another great staff member, tracking that rulemaking process as well at the Salem level.
We do it and that's okay, except it just becomes more complex all the time. They keep sending things down to us to make changes. It's the new world. I guess that's going to happen, but how do we handle it? How do we staff money? We've got, you know, we have budget constraints here too. And so it's complex.
I think that's the message to our legislature, Steve, that we, as a council, have to take forward through the legislative committee, right? Like, it's to just talk, like, some of this is atomic-level detail. It may be too big and too complicated for state rulemaking. I mean, it's, there's just a lot. And that, you know, one of the things that I feel like is missing in this entire conversation, and Mark alluded to it before, was these bills are sort of, and rules are sort of made in a silo and they may actually impact other bills and other rules that are sort of made by other groups, right? And one of the messages I think is really important for us to have is for everybody to kind of back up and look at the whole picture so that we don't have one group making one rule and then another group turning around and either making it harder or undoing that same rule, right? Because that just creates, there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen here. Conflict. Yep. Sophie?
I think I'm in the minority of my opinion on this. I'm a professional planner for another jurisdiction, so do a lot of planning all the time, sometimes paid, sometimes volunteer. And I chose to pursue a planning career in the state of Oregon because it's the premier place in the country to do land use planning because of Senate Bill 100 in 1972 introduced by Governor Tom McCall. So that must have been so scary when it came down and required a lot of work to establish urban growth boundaries and comprehensive plans and statewide planning goals. And we are such a wonderful place to live and such a phenomenal place to do land use planning because of it. And so I totally sympathize with staff. It is too much work right now, especially in a time where there's a budget crisis due to the pandemic. And it's so daunting to add, daunting or sometimes impossible to add additional staff capacity. And I'm hopeful that when we get to the other side of this, we'll be an even better place for land use planning and we'll have even stronger rules to lean on for our local decisions. And I'm actually really excited to see what comes of it. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Early?
What I was, what crossed my mind as Mark and Steve were talking was when we got started on revamping the development code, the whole idea was to make it simpler, make it easier for the developers, for the people who came up to the counter and said, I want to do this. And the more simple we try, the more complex it seems to get, not under our control, but you know, in control that tells us, you know, you will do it this and we will do it this way. So you talk about sending a message to Salem and to our representatives. I think that's one message that needs to go is that the more complex it gets, the less interest the developers are going to be in creating the end result that they would like to see. There are certain things that they're passing this legislation with end results in mind. But if we don't have anybody that wants to get in the middle of it and make it work, it's not going to, it's not going to create the result that they want. So it really is. I mean, that was our whole idea, was to make it simpler and easier to use. And it's just gotten, you know, they just keep throwing things at us and making it harder.
Getting costlier and we keep passing that on to the homeowner, the home buyer. To buy it. So price of housing goes up because of the result of this. It's just, it's just one of the things that happens.
And then you end up having the big groups, the big mega groups coming in and buying the whole property and creating 300 apartments rather than somebody being able to afford to buy that property and put a house on it or a duplex or something like that. So it creates issues in some ways.
All right, other comments or we can turn it back over to Mark to keep talking about some of the other issues coming up? All right, Mark, keep on going.
Yeah, and definitely I would say housing and affordability is an underwriting theme with a lot of the legislation. It's no secret, we're obviously in a crisis with housing, not locally or statewide, but nationally. A lot of the legislation has to do with kind of citing of emergency shelters or just, and again, I think Mayor Van Gordon or one of the counselors mentioned, a lot of the ideas are good and, you know, they are trying to accomplish things to make things easier in a lot of cases. So to the extent that some of these bills, you know, try and identify maybe barriers in the system, that I guess part of it that can get tricky for looking at it at a local level for Springfield is these are one-size-fits-all type of solutions that apply pretty much statewide in a lot of cases to different-sized jurisdictions. And so some jurisdictions do tend to put barriers in place or use their codes in ways to try and prevent development. So it's kind of, it's setting a bar in a certain place for everybody when some people maybe want to work at a higher level than that bar, something like that. I'm thinking of Springfield. My impression is like Counselor Woodrow said, is, you know, making things easier. So where some of this legislation might actually work towards undoing that versus a different jurisdiction that might actually want to make things more complicated. And so this is actually forcing them to have it be simpler than where they're at. So it's a matter of where we're at on the spectrum. Again, I don't necessarily feel like I need to go through all these bills. Another one we're working on right now, I will mention, House Bill 3109, childcare facilities. It's seemingly a pretty straightforward piece of legislation. It's, again, I think Mayor Van Gordon mentioned, it's like when you get into the details or figure out all the implications from it and how it's implemented, that it can get tricky. So certain members of the community might hear about this legislation or think that it does a certain thing. And then when you really evaluate it, it may or may not be realizing the exact outcome that it was sold as or that people thought it might be doing. So the childcare facility legislation is another one we're kind of grappling with right now to try and figure out how to implement it. Again, the implementation date is the first of the year, so just less than two months away. And there's no way we're going to change our code in time to have that in our code to react to state law. So then it creates this dynamic where for a period of time, until we can change our code to be consistent with the new law, that we're out of compliance, that then we're not implementing our local code. We have to defer to the state laws. And it's a similar case with some ADU language around parking that was implemented as part of House Bill 2001. I mean, it's not unheard of, but it just creates a dynamic where even our own code is in a state of flux where it's not accurate. And so if people don't know that and they're trying to read our code to understand, it makes it more difficult to use.
What I see is a lot of these issues are, the development code is too difficult to overcome to get them there. So they're doing patches, like, look at these, these are Band-Aids that they're passing to have some of these issues to go beyond that. And well, it helps, but it sure complicates things for you.
So I would say that's really all I pretty much have tonight. Again, I'm happy to elaborate further on any of the topics or answer questions, but just kind of really a big-picture view at the idea that there's a lot happening in the background with trying to keep up with all these changes in laws and legislation and building it into the development code. So with the hopes that when you ultimately do see the development code, the planning commission's getting ready to have their first public hearing on the development code on January 4th. We're busily getting ready for that. We have a work session in another week from tomorrow night with the planning commission. And the notices will be going out, so you'll be hearing probably from community members about some of this that will hopefully or likely generate a little bit more of a buzz about the formal public hearing process is happening. More formal final versions of the public hearing sections of the code that will be in front of the planning commission will be going out, those types of things will be happening. So anyway, it's a lot of work to put it all on paper and get it to a point where hopefully it all works together. Also recognizing that I've been the face of this development code update project now for over three years or about three years. And I'll probably likely be the scapegoat when things are found to be wrong and not doing that well. And I'll be happy to take that. But just acknowledging upfront that we won't get it 100% right the first time. So there will likely be fixes brought back to the planning commission and the city council to, you know, correct things or adjust things as necessary. But anyway, just want to put that out there.
All right, thanks, Mark. Other comments about the development code?
I just, I just want to say thank you. That list that he put in was really helpful. I mean, it kind of separated things out and gave us an opportunity to read through it in just a very simple way to see what some of those had to do, because I'm trying to research and find out is even, even in media, it's like trying to do a jigsaw puzzle. So this was really helpful.
And I definitely want to give credit where credit's due. I didn't do the work. Our City Attorney's Office did put that list together. So Christina Kraz is a big kudos to her for keeping track of all that.
Thank you, Christina.
So.
It's a team effort and Mark is a great person to work with on this project, so it's my pleasure.
Mark, what additional support do you need from either the council or the planning commission for this? Because this is probably the most important thing we've got going on for the long-term sake of the city. And I know that this is always something that's talked about among this group. So is there any additional support or additional feedback that you need from us?
Well, I mean, I think most of these two bodies are where I was recently promoted to current planning supervisor to backfill the vacancy left by Jim Donovan, who retired. So I'm kind of juggling two positions, both the current planning supervisor and the code development project right now. We are actively working, Sandy is working on backfilling the code, development code update project position. So there will be a lot of coordination there. I guess just some grace, a little bit of grace in that we're all working in a different environment now and just recognizing the shifting dynamics of things. But we're doing the best we can with what we got. I think the council has been and the planning commission both very supportive and complimentary of the work. And so we appreciate that and keep asking the questions. I mean, we're here to wrestle with the issues and answer the hard questions. So I always appreciate multiple sets of eyes on the work because the more we can identify upfront, the better it'll be and the outcome will be.
Steve?
We have to remember, our ultimate goal in Springfield is to produce more affordable housing and with that, jobs that go with. But that's what we're trying to do. That's the big picture.
Yeah, and I think it's critical for us to keep that, kind of our eyes on the prize here, right? We want people to have an easy experience from the planning code and understand what they need to do with their piece of property to develop it so that people can choose to live here.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mark. That's our last topic for the joint meeting. I'm going to open it up one more time to see if there's any other sort of questions or comments the planning commissioner or city council has before I let the planning commission go, because I have one quick announcement for the city council. Any other comments that, Damian?
Hi. Go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry.
Okay, so I mean, I would love to hear from the commission, what role do they see the city council liaison playing? I mean, I think with legalities and biases and stuff, a city council can't really comment, can't contribute nearly as much other than give an update. You all send people to these meetings. And so, you know, just thinking, you know, holistically, I would love to hear from you all what role you think the council would play at the meeting specifically or what you even think a city, a council liaison even means.
Sophie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Pitts. And I do have an email somewhere that I'm trying to reference, but I can just try to go off of memory and then perhaps call a friend by bringing Sandy in. And so we, the, the planning commission has a city council liaison in Commissioner Gill, who is not here tonight. However, she does not watch every single one of the meetings. We take turns as a commission watching the meetings and that's been something that's been helpful for us so that we have some evenings free occasionally. However, I think the city council liaison has, in the past, been expected to attend planning commission meetings. But since they aren't on the planning commission, aren't able to speak or deliberate, and I think that that can be frustrating, that time commitment and, you know, just having to watch the meeting. So I think next steps there could be Counselor Pitts meeting with Commissioner Gill to discuss the roles and the best way to move forward. And Sandy, am I missing anything there for things that could potentially change? For things that could potentially change.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I think it's really up to, you know, what the commission and the council. Want in terms of that back and forth, and I think it's a good question to ask. Both. You know, for this particular circumstance, but then as the council considers its bylaws and. Committee appointments and such and. I think each committee is different. It has a different dynamic. In some cases, the counselor is in. A voting member of the committee. And in other cases, like the planning commission, the counselor. And that's attending as the liaison is not a voting member. And so then what is the expectation there, but. To, to respond to Commissioner Gill's question. I think. It can be collaborating or coordinating, you know, outside of the meetings to make sure that any issues that are. From the planning commission that the council should be aware of that get coordinated or vice versa, council direction on certain policy issues that might affect a planning commission outcome. To have that come back the other way. So from a staff perspective. You know, we're looking at. Making sure that the coordination, that it's not all. Up to a staff to make. To be communicating everything to planning commissioner of the council, that there can be some cross communication between the two bodies directly.
Thanks, Sandy, for that, for that feedback. Andrew.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I'm fairly new, so I, I'm just gonna kind of throw out. My thought to that, the question, I think on a. On a much, kind of like now that you're thirty thousand foot view of it. Then it'd be helpful to know. How closely aligned, you know, the, the commission and, and the council. End up being on issues and so part of our, our role is. To provide recommendations to the council, give you guys the. The information that you guys need and the resources you guys need to make ultimate decisions in a lot of cases. Especially when it goes beyond the commission level. And so. To have a better sense of, gosh, are we on the same page here? Are we looking at this the same way? Or are we kind of going one direction with, with our recommendations and. The council's kind of in a different, different direction. So just kind of making sure that there's some communications so that we're, we're at least kind of looking at things. From a similar lens so that. So that it's not, hey, we're over here and then the recommendation goes up and then the council's in a different place. So that's the only thought that I have to, uh, towards that and. And again, I'm, I'm pretty new, so there's a lot that I'm still learning. The first few months here have been. Been definitely educational. A lot to learn, but that, that's just one, one thought that I have and I don't know how close. Close we are in some of those, but thanks for the question.
And I, I think my suggestion would be, like, I like the idea of. Corey and Damian meeting regularly, right? Like, I think that probably is gonna bring a lot more value. Then it is necessarily having somebody physically go to the actual hearing. Every single, every single time, but that, you know, on the flip side, every once in a while, there's. There's really high profile items where the flavor and the value could be there, but I think it's, you know, I, I think it's up to Damian for you to find that. Find, uh, find the, the, the place or the, you know, use a judgment based on, on the situation that, that you guys are, you guys find yourself in. And then I think Andrew brings up a really good point about like, both bodies work best when they're relatively connected. And just understanding like where that we're, where we're all working towards is sort of a, a critical piece and how. And just like I said, feeling bet more connected is probably the best, one of the better outcomes of meetings like this. All right. Any other comments? Very good. Sophie, I'm gonna have you adjourn the planning commission and let these folks go. I have. One quick item for the city council that is gonna take less than like two and a half minutes. But we have gone already over and I really appreciate you guys coming and meeting with us and just sharing some additional information. I think it helps a ton.
Thank you for having us tonight as your guests and with that, I adjourned the planning commission work session.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
All right, I had one quick. I guess. Item that I wanted to share going into next week, we are going to start with boards and commissions. AJ, keep me honest if I'm, if I have the date wrong. One of the things. One of the things that. That we talked about throughout the rest of the year is to, instead of having six or seven questions. Really shrink down that interview as small as possible. In my recommendation, you know, when we were in agenda review was to simply just have two questions. And I want to make sure that you guys have an opportunity to go. Never mind, I want seven questions or like two, two still sounds fine to me. The two questions that I was gonna have AJ. Sort of load into the, the agenda. Were like, why do you want to serve? And right, in a question about explaining just their thoughts on their role between advisory boards and their, their relationship to the council. There's a lot of good information in these agenda, in these applications. So we didn't necessarily need to re-ask all those questions. With that, I'm gonna pause, let you guys give any comments. If you're like, hey, that sounds great. Or no. I have a different opinion here. Leonard.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I, I like both of those questions. I, I, I do see a place for another question that would be along the lines of. What do you see as the issues or challenges confronting the city? As relates to, you know, the commission. I mean. It seems as though the, these are both like very pragmatic questions that you're proposing and I think there's a room, there's room for a big picture question too.
Okay. Mary Lee.
I, my thought was similar to add a question similar to Leonard's that encompasses. How do they feel they, because I look at each, I look at each committee and commission as being. The people that are on it are representative of different parts of the community. And so I, I, in along in line with what Leonard was thinking, how this person. Views themselves as a representative. Of either their area or their area of expertise. And how, and how they would fit into that committee or commission with that. Being able to represent. They're part of the community.
Okay. So we're right on to that, adding kind of a third question. Okay, Damian, go ahead.
Hi, uh, I'm not sure the second question really hits on anything. I mean. You know, what role do they see? I mean, I, I don't, I don't see. How that question. Shows that they are wanting to and can serve in, in this commission. I mean, I, I would love to see. Questions actually come from the commission because they're gonna be the ones or board or whatever it is, because they're gonna be the ones who are working with. Us on occasion in our liaison roles or we have a meeting with them, but I mean, I, I, I think. We really need the input of the actual boards and commissions because they're gonna be the ones on the front lines of these people, not us. And I mean, I, you, you know, I understand that there needs to be a, some standardization, but. You know, just like was mentioned last few minutes ago. The complaining, the planning commission is completely different from CPAC or the historic commission, and so we need to tailor those questions specifically. To those boards. I mean, I don't know if there are any legal issues with diversifying the questions a little bit, but. Yeah, but going back to my point, I'm not sure what question two really does because technically they could say, I have no idea and they shouldn't be gigged for it. But they would be, let's be real.
That, that's true. It, it is a common question that gets asked when to kind of. See where people, what their sense of like, okay, what role does the staff play? What role does the advisory board play and what role does that, what role does that council play in this? And, you know, some people, we put people, that has not been a deal killer of a question for anybody. Cory.
Yeah, I know, I know we're making this more than two minutes.
I know, you're over, you're over allowed already, Cory.
But I, I actually really agree with Counselor Pitts and I know I've talked to you about this before and I know I'm late to the party because we've made a decision. That everyone's gonna be interviewed by the council for these positions. But I do think that the people who are doing the work and the combination of staff. And the boards and commissions and committees should be doing some of that, that sort of helping to. And I don't want to say that because I, I also don't want to like lean into total self-selection. But we don't know, like, I don't know what makes a good whatever. I mean, the only, I've served on the budget committee and even that, it's like. So I think that, that it, it comes across like we're trying to sort of, you know, fi- find a cultural fit as opposed to like. Finding a person who's like genuinely passionate for the work. So. I agree with Counselor Pitts, we probably can't do that this time around, but I would love to see us maybe get out of it.
Yeah, and, and that's, I think, when we get to, when we get to goal setting and when that gets scheduled, let, that, that's one of the questions that's gonna get sort of. Vetted out and sort of flushed out, right? Like so. About, about the overall process, so just be patient. I hear you, Cory. I know you want to have a longer conversation about it. I got you covered. Mary Lee.
We did that. I don't know how we got away from it, but we did have an initial screening process. So if we had six or seven applicants for the arts commission. They talked to all of them and they recommended two or three to come to council for, for questions there. So we were, I don't know how it got changed, but we were doing that. As, as soon back as maybe four years. So. I agree. I think that should be, I, I think that should be, I think we should bring that back.
Yeah, and again, well, I think we'll, we'll have time to talk about it from a. On that, when we get into, when we get into goal setting, right? Cause we, we saved all of our sort of appointments for the year. We kind of have to get through some of this stuff. But it is on the agenda for goal setting. Steve.
Yep. I look at when we advertise for a committee. Then the applicant responds to that. And when you talk to an application, I sort of like it has a resume, so they talk about. What qualities and they have for their committee. And so I like to, when we, I want to inter- interview them, just even if it's a couple of questions to get feel for them. Cause that's a whole different thing. So we know what the resume is and in that, in that, that question process, we'll get a whole number, another view of them and. Helps us make our. Make our choice.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things now that we're over two minutes. And I'm blaming Counselor Rodley. No, I'm just kidding. Let's go three questions for, three questions for next week. Right? And we'll write them up and we will get a chance to change them if for some reason. You know, if we want to change some of the phrasing right, right before we, we ask questions. We just have to ask them consistently. The second thing is that we really want to talk about how we make appointments when it comes to. Goal setting for the next year and Nancy and I have a meeting later about when we're going to schedule that. It does not have a date yet. Right? Cause I'm, I'm hearing a lot of like, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? And we can, we can adjust what we're doing going forward. Okay. Anything else? All right, thanks guys for staying on late. Have a good night. We are adjourned.
You too, good night.